Hi, and welcome to the October meeting of the Swampscot zoning board of appeals. The first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from last month, not the minutes from last week's meeting, but the minutes from the previous month that we all received. Can I just get a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from last month.
Can you get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, alright. Our next item is petition number 2517, which is 40 Essex Street and 24 through 26 Essex And that is for the extended use of a pre-existing repair garage as well as the addition of a spray booth. I was here to speak on that petition.
Good evening, I'm Attorney Sam Vitale. With me is Gennaro, who is the principal of Lally's Garage LLC, having acquired that entity in the fall, I think, of 2022. He's also the principal of Realty Investors that owns the real estate at the locus. And as the chairwoman indicated, we're here to get approval of a special permit with respect to the addition of a spray booth at the location. There's probably people in this room better know than I do the history of this site, I think is well-known by most Swampscot residents. Lally's Garage, I would think, has been close to a century. In the 1930s and 40s, it was organized with John Lally, and then subsequently it was run by Bob Wilson, and then Gennaro acquired it, and with it the assets of the business as well as the permits and approvals that had been there. It's been used continuously with respect to auto repair. I think anecdotally, and from what I've been told by Swampscot residents, and historically, there was body work down there. People have given me stories that John Lally used to go down and get the police cruisers when they were in an accident, or other city-owned vehicles, bring them back to his shop, fix them, both whether it was body-wise or mechanical-wise. The reason we're here is that, like many businesses, the technology has now changed. No longer can anybody have a spray booth and jury-rig it and build it in their backyard. This is a highly regulated piece of equipment. The manufacturers who distribute them are well-aware of the regulations that involve the environment, fire suppression, and so typically when you acquire one of these machines, it comes with all of the bells and whistles that ensure protection of the environment, protection of the site. And we're not asking you to waive any of those, nor do you have the authority, but any jurisdiction that has, any authority that has jurisdiction, whether it's over the environmental aspects, the fire prevention, the use of the interior of the building, we have to comply with. So this is a stop along the way. Your approval is really related to the zoning use. Your current table of uses, I think it's number nine, in the B1 districts has, does not have this as a permitted use, that's why it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. It's been there prior to the adoption of zoning. And what we're proposing to do is essentially the same type of use in a similar manner, and we think it will have little or no adverse effect on the neighborhood, let alone a substantial detrimental effect. So let me go through and reflect on why I gave you those items. With respect to the current use, the automobile business and the repair business has changed. If you have the misfortune of having to get your car fixed or repaired from an accident, you'll find that they'll use a tablet to make a diagnostic determination of what's wrong with the engine. They don't even lift the hood anymore. They just plug in this tablet. And likewise, if you have body work that's done, and you've got an outstanding color or whatever, they punch in the information on your vehicle, and up comes the paint that they should use. So, and as I look around this room, I don't know as many people as old as I am, but I can tell you that on Tuesday nights, when I was a kid, people would watch at eight o'clock Milton Borough on the show of whatever he had, it was a little six-inch black or white screen, brought to you by Texaco. And why I point that out is that if you have any memory like I do of those ads, there would be a gas station attendant who would come and clean your windshield, and then he would check your tires, and then he would pump your gas, and then if you were really lucky, they might give away a set of glasses or whatever. I've had the good fortune to represent Mobil Oil and Shell Oil, and I can tell you, that's not what the modern gas station is like, nor is it what the modern auto repair and body shop is like. The reason we're here, as I indicated, if you look at that table of uses, but what I also did, is I looked at the ordinance definition of what we're seeking, and that is, it says, this is from your definitions, it says, "A motor vehicle general and body repair shop. An establishment garage or work area enclosed within a building for the servicing and repair of autos, including fenders, bumpers, and similar components of motor vehicle bodies, but not including storage of vehicles for the cannibalization of parts or fuel sales." So it tells you what it is, and it tells you what it isn't. Our proposal doesn't change the footprint of the building. If anything, the exterior will be improved. Likewise, in the interior of the building, it will be state-of-the-art equipment. I looked over today a specification, and I brought a few of the pages from a manufacturer of a spray booth. And I saw great attention to detail, to issues like fire suppression, issues like particulate and what to do with the pollution. I talked with Gennaro, and with respect to the venting of anything, it would be on the side that faces the building he owns, which is the smaller building of Lally's Garage. The work we're talking about is in the larger building, in the interior, within one and safe. Right. When I filed the application, I thought I addressed each of the items for your special permit criteria. One of them did deal with the environment. It's the same hours, it's the same location, and it's, what we want to do is add that one other service, which is the body work. In terms of 40A6 finding, as you are well-familiar, it relates to whether you, what you propose to do is substantially more detrimental in its effect on the neighborhood. And I would suggest to you, this is an even more detrimental. It's similar to what had been done in the past, and now it's going to be done properly in a better manner suited for the current nature of the auto repair and auto body business. So we would be hopeful that this is, I indicated, our first step along the way. Should the board choose to approve and grant and make the finding for the special permit, then we would have to deal with the fire department, we would have to deal with the building department. But as far as abrogating or seeking relief from any current existing DEP or EPA or any regulation that relates to the environment, pollution, or to fire safety, we're not seeking that. We're seeking to play by the rules, to do it better than it has been done in the past, to create some work opportunities for people within the town, and more importantly, to provide a service that we think the citizens of the community may well have need for, whether it's auto repair or auto body. I'd be glad to answer any questions any member may have.
So is there a spray booth there now?
No.
There is, there is not, and there hasn't been?
No. Well, I don't, I can't speak to the past with John Lally because I hadn't been in the garage when Lally owned it. I don't know, I just know what people told me about what transpired in the past.
Yeah, so but right now there isn't a working spray booth? And then what are the current hours, just for the record?
The current hours?
Hours are staying the same remaining?
Seven to five, Gennaro.
Seven to five, thanks.
Mr. Vitale, so what use, that is, what I'm trying to figure out is whether, what protection you have under 40A for the pre-existing non-conforming use, and how far that goes? So is there, has there been historically painting of vehicles there, just not in the spray booth? Has there been body work?
Well, I only have anecdotal, I don't have, I can't speak firsthand to the approval, but let me just say to you that with respect to the criteria for what we seek, I'll fall back on my Jesuit training and philosophy. The essence of what we're talking about in that definition is motor vehicle repairs. That, that's, that's why it's substantially the same use and substantially the same manner. What we're asking about is an ancillary use, another use, an auxiliary use, and that is to do body work. To do body work safely and to do it in accordance with the current requirements, you need a configuration called a spray booth. And those are regulated by other authorities. But in terms of the nature of what we're seeking, we're just seeking a further extension of what we believe has been the use, continues to be the use, and was once the use, maybe not the approval of this board or other boards, because it dates back so far. But to have a spray booth in this current environment, you have to have one that satisfies the requirements of the state and the federal government with respect to the environment, the manufacturers who make them, build them with that in mind, so they satisfy all of those. So we see this as offering another service that relates to motor vehicles, and that's why I read the definition, which clearly indicates that when it says fenders and bumpers and other parts of vehicles, that that's body work. And that's, that's how it's defined in your zone ordinance. What we seek is the approval of the board that that activity is not substantially more detrimental in its effect on the neighborhood, and I don't believe that it is.
So your position is that it's an accessory use that's already going on there, and you're looking to expand that?
That it's, that, I think it's an extension of the use that's there, yes. But I think we satisfy the criteria for that.
So as far as the way, you're asking for two things. One is the continued use, and the other is the spray booth. Do you need any relief for the continued use? If the continued use is, is that just a finding that it's continued use? Would you agree? Like, that's not a new?
That's just what I was thinking.
Special permit? Like, because you can't get a special permit for, for this use in this location?
You can't, it's, the answer is, it would be a variance because it's no.
Right.
On the table of principal uses, but an accessory use is permitted under our bylaw if it's customary, customary and incidental to the principal use, or if there's protection of the use. 40A lets you expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure, we've been familiar with that.
Right.
And same thing with, with use, if it's, my understanding is if it's customary and incidental. So the, I think the analysis is, if the use that was proposed was an expansion of the use such that it would become an additional principal use, then the analysis would be, okay, can we grant relief there? Our bylaw says no. So if I heard that, if I heard that it was going to be 80% occupied by this paint booth for the work, and now the mechanical work was going to be 20%?
Secondary, yeah.
And that was going to now be accessory, and we had it flipping, I would say that would be a new principal use. So I'd love to know just how much, if there's a square footage of how much space the paint booth is going to occupy as part of the premises?
I think the building's about, what, 5,000 gross square feet?
Just over.
Yeah.
The booth would occupy less than a thousand.
Right, and I was going to say that the specifications I saw show booths to be that.
So they pass that part of the analysis that I would see, that it's not clearly a new principal use because it's the dominant use?
And in number nine for, for our zoning bylaw, we have motor vehicle general and body repair under the same use.
Yeah, we had, I'm sure Andy remembers, years ago we had a lot of, a couple of different cases with this light service. You remember those?
Yeah, light service is its own use, though.
Charlie remembers.
Mr. Patsy.
Yeah.
It was his, it was his.
But that's light service, whereas we, this is not light service. This is, this is pre-existing auto repair shop without a doubt, and that's on number nine, and that does include in our bylaw body repair as part of that.
Is that where the spray booth is going to be in the existing?
It's in.
Yeah.
It's in Congress.
Since everything's inside the existing building.
40 Essex Street.
Correct, the big building.
It's in Congress to think that you could do repair work and not like paint the car. What are you going to do?
It's, it's what?
It's in Congress that you can do, you can repair the car, fix the dent, and then you're going to leave it unpainted.
Well, a lot of repair shops aren't auto body shops.
Right, right.
You have to go to a special auto body shop to get, to get body work.
Not everybody does body work, and that's one of the reasons I'm sure they're looking to expand. It's, it's become a, a smaller volume of, of businesses that are doing the body work because there's a lot more that's involved than had.
Right, it's like putting a dry cleaner in and.
Exactly.
It's going to dry clean on the site as opposed to drop off, and you're all concerned about the environmental issue.
Yeah, right.
To elaborate on what you said about the use before, so when the 60s, 70s, and 80s, a spray booth was a room that somebody built with an exhaust fan that shut everything outside.
I remember him well.
Correct. So when you fixed the car back then, if it was a police car, you took the fender off, you painted it, it was done, you put it on. Didn't match, you told them, here you go. Today, the painting is so far advanced, there's 5,000 colors. So you need this high-tech booth, which everything the attorney Vitale said encapsulates the filter system, all of that stuff. So back when Swirevast sold John Lally painted cars or Bob Wilson fixed the truck, there was no protection, but the booth was.
But that's, are you, do you personally know, have you observed that he was in the building painting cars?
Yes, Bob Wilson, yes. John Lally, unfortunately, no.
Okay.
So in 1986, Swampscot High School graduate, my car got smashed up. Lally's zoning came to the police and towed it away, this is before I had my own business. They brought it to their shop, they repaired it, it was a 1986 IROC. They fixed it, gave it back to me, they charged the insurance company. So yes, they fixed cars in the 80s. Did they have a proper spray booth? No.
I, I'm more concerned with, with what you said, that there, the use was ongoing at that time.
But I don't, but the use wasn't, the use isn't currently ongoing, and it hasn't been for years.
Well, you can, you can abandon a use.
You can abandon a use.
You know, you have two years of non-use.
Okay.
Well, Bob Wilson always operated. He only fixed cars for friends. He only charged people very little. It was time for Bob Wilson to retire, so we bought the business. We put a tenant in there who was going to repair cars, fix cars, and sell tires. Unfortunately, he failed. So now here we are, back with a building that we paid a lot of money for, my sister and I and my family, and we're looking to rent it. Everyone who's come to us to rent it wants to be in the body business. Also, I'd like to note that less than a half a mile away is a giant body shop right next to the gas station, right across from the school. It's in this area. It's nothing crazy out of the ordinary.
Yeah, there's a collision. Swampscot collision is right there.
Right, right there. He's managed three years, and he has all the updated stuff, just like we will, but we're having a hard time finding a tenant to continue the existing use, so we're asking for the use of the body shop with a high-tech spray booth, which protects everybody.
So are you close to the two years on the use, or are you?
No, we've all, we've never stopped using it.
Okay.
It's being used right now.
Okay. Alright. Does anybody else on the board have?
Well, I think it'd be, I think it'd be interesting to hear if any of the neighbors have observed, they may have observations or that they've seen, or they've smelled, you know, paint in that application.
Alright, does anybody, would anybody like to speak? Just state your name and address, please.
Michael Celia.
Oh, you've got a microphone.
19 Essex Street. I would like to attack this from a little bit different angle from an environmental one, so I'm going to read you some things. Essex Street is already a corridor for particulate matter pollution because it's a busy street and also a truck route, even though not designated as one. This is the same size particle pollution as can be generated by a car spray paint booth and of the size most hazardous to human health. I am appealing for not adding more possible pollution to our street. Whatever pollution control system is installed for the filtration ventilation for the paint spray booth, how will we know if it is malfunctioning and are not complying with EPA standards for 98% collection of emissions? They may qualify for a permit exemption, but even with a permit exemption, there are still permit exemption requirements that must still demonstrate compliance as outlined in the exemption permit with detailed monthly records, but they won't be required to submit those reports to the DEP, which will no longer have authority. The only thing we can do is report odors or dust to the Board of Health, but by then it's too late. We will be the guinea pigs for any pollution violation. And also, some volatile organic gases are odorless, like benzene, which is a known human carcinogen and produced in a spray paint booth. It is also important to remember that odors are not just odors. If you smell something, you are inhaling its particles or gases, whatever size they may be. I do not garden in the front of my property when traffic is thick, because if I do, and I'm there long enough, I start to feel sick. Also, I don't open windows at the front of my home, as I would soon be able to run a finger across a piece of furniture, and it would come up black. This is from traffic fumes, the products of combustion of gasoline and diesel fuel, again, the same size of particle that is part of the pollutants from an auto spray paint booth, both of which can contribute to early death for millions of Americans. I think we should also know, prior to any decision, exactly who the manufacturer is and what the model number is for the filtration and volatile organic gases like benzene, and if it is, if it has a gas scrubber like charcoal. Volatile organic gases are produced by products used in a car spray paint booth. Can we please put people in front of more possible pollution on our street? We have more traffic, our eown place, and soon another eight residential units directly across from 40 Essex Street, which will add more traffic, and children already playing on two sides of the property. I'm hoping you will protect us from more possible harm to our health. I am hoping you will look out for us in a preventative precautionary way, similar to the European Union's policy called the precautionary principle, which I've admired for many years. The EU's precautionary principle is a policy that allows for the taking of preventative action in the face of potential risks to human health, animal or plant health, or the environment. It enables authorities to implement provisional risk management measurements, such as restricting products or halting certain activities when there are reasonable grounds for concern that potential harm could occur. So I'm asking you not to add this potential burden to our neighborhood. And again, those detailed monthly records have to be kept, but the DEP doesn't receive them, they don't have the authority to receive them. The Board of Health could ask for them, but is the Board of Health going to ask for those detailed monthly records every month, or are they just going to look into it when one of us complains about an odor? And again, some of these odors are odorless, and we won't even know if we're breathing them. So thank you, and thank you for the butters notice, too.
Does anybody else have?
I, I just had some thoughts on this.
Yeah, yeah.
Just personally, I see our jurisdiction as, we don't have the jurisdiction to give relief and give a special permit for a new use here. I see our jurisdiction as to make a finding as to whether or not the existing accessory use is present, and if the proposed use is within that use and not becoming a new principal use. I don't know that we, in terms of the, because we can't say, okay, you're not doing it, you can do it. I don't think that's what we have jurisdiction to do, I mean, already.
They're currently not doing it because that's why no one wants to rent the space, because there's not the space to do it. So they're not doing it.
Well, they don't have a paint booth. They don't have a paint booth. The question is, is the, I see it twofold. First, is there currently body repair being conducted at the property in painting? And then, if so, is the addition of the paint booth still an accessory use, an expansion of that accessory use, but not such an expansion as to become a new principal use? That's how, what I see our analysis of, on this.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely see it as a new, a new use in that it's not currently, it can't legally be used as it, because they don't have the right equipment.
Right.
So it can't be used now. So we know that the use, the use ended at some point.
Well, no, no, but I, I see it a little differently. I see it that the use doesn't need to be made fully. So let's say back in the 1990s, they had a bay that was dedicated to painting cars. Okay, it didn't have a lift in it for mechanical repairs, it was just dedicated, and there's never been a booth in the, in the property, but they were continuously painting cars. And maybe that slowed down a bit, maybe they, they, if, but if there was that use that was not abandoned for a consist, for a two-year period, then it continues, and I think it's a valid accessory use. My opinion. And that's the way I understood the presentation. I, I, you know, if, if.
And then, well, then if we argue, if the argument is that it, that it has, they have law, let's just say that use hasn't, we, it has been suspended for more than two years.
Yeah.
Then the question is, is this similar to, you know, are, are you creating a new non-conformity? Is this use substantially more detrimental than the one use that has continued?
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the analysis. I don't think it's a substantially more detrimental analysis, because that's if we were granting a special permit. We don't have authority to grant a special permit. I see, we have a very narrow window just to make a finding or not make a finding that there's been this continuous accessory use. So I, I had a case at the appeals court before, accessory use, Simmons v. zoning board of Newburyport, and my client had horses on a residential lot, right next to the Ana Jakes Hospital. And the building inspector wanted a, well, at first it was a request that they removed them, and we argued that they were kept as pets, and it was an accessory use, even though they occupied an acre of the property and the house was on a small piece of it. And the appeals court agreed that they were kept as pets, and it was an accessory use. And it's the same analysis that I see here, that the question is, they got to prove that it's, it's accessory, that it's incidental and related thereto, and that it hasn't been abandoned, that it was, there was been a continuous use for body work over the entire period of time up to today. It doesn't mean that they have to be painting a car every day, it can be very intermittent in my mind, but it's, that's a question for the, for the board to make that finding. And, you know, reasonable minds absolutely can differ as to whether or not they make that, they can prove that. What I, what I was going to say, as to what I would want to put in for evidence, if I were the petitioner, I'd want to go to my paint supplier and get the records that show, look, once a month we were getting paint dropped off here for the past 30 years. That would be persuasive to me.
So you're saying that really it's, you know, we're listening to the neighbors, but the real issue is that we don't have enough material to make this decision now. We need, you do, based on your analysis, you're putting it back on the petitioner to say, give me some proof.
Well, we, we have some, we have testimony. I don't know that it's enough, you know, it's here from 1986, that you got your car painted there, that you observed them doing painting. It would be a lot stronger, and that's, that's what.
So can the?
Everybody gets their paint from the auto, it's, it's, they get their paint from the, the supplier for the auto paints.
So I guess the question is the same.
And it could also be body parts, too.
Right.
It could be getting, showing invoices that show, look, we were getting, here's a bumper, here's a fender.
But I think that goes back to what we were saying earlier, where if you're getting parts, that necessarily implies that you're getting them painted on site, and I don't think that's necessarily true.
That's, that's a good point, that it doesn't necessarily prove that, but. That's, that's a good point, that it doesn't necessarily prove that, but, but.
But the paint order or something like that.
The paint order would, yeah.
So I guess, I guess the question is.
Or parts for, or.
The petitioner, can the petitioner produce some documentation?
Equipment, yeah, show that you've got paint guns.
So can, I don't know the paint laws, but can you paint vehicles or parts without a paint booth? Meaning, to the extent that prior tenants have been painting parts before today, is it in compliance with DEP or EPA or whatever?
Spray can.
You, that's, that's my question. You can paint them with a spray can?
Right now, we brush.
You brush? Okay.
There's dumps, many dumpsters in there, thousands of dumpsters have been painted. I could show hundreds of receipts for the paint, no problem, but it's all brushed.
Okay.
We don't spray.
Oh, painting dumpsters, not vehicles. I don't know that that's auto, it's painting, it's accessory use.
Correct.
But I, the real key here, well.
Did I personally spray any cars? No, I've never lied to the board. Did the tenant I had in there? Yes. Did Bob Wilson? Yes. Did John Lally? Yes.
Right.
I can't get their receipts.
So if you, if you knew who his paint supplier was and you could go to them and, and get the paint records, that would be very persuasive.
I think the reason we advertise and put the words in there is we want to do it the right way. We want to do it in conformity with what the DEP says and the EPA says and what the fire department said. So we ask, we're asking to formalize something that, as I indicated, in past years, people have a different view on how to do some of those things. We want to do it right. So the request was to allow us to continue to do that activity with a spray booth.
Right, and I think we have the authority.
And a spray booth is a, is a technical, it's a, it's a rule, essentially.
Yeah, I understand what the spray booth is, but the, I think we have to, I see that we have authority just to do it as an accessory use.
Right, the methodology of how you're going to paint the cars is what's at issue here, it's whether you've been painting the cars.
Yeah, even if it wasn't, not in compliance.
Even if you painted it with your tongue, you know.
Is that enough to trigger forty A protection?
So that was, that kind of, my question kind of goes to the point you're making right now. Is there any documentation that the use of spray cans or paint brushing any vehicles in the past, I guess, two years? Is there, would there be records of that from anybody? Because wouldn't, wouldn't records of that type of painting check the box you're talking about, Mark?
Yeah, if, if, if they had receipts.
Receipts for the work done, receipts from the supplier.
Showing that you had the purchase of paint guns, that they use compressors typically if they're using a body work.
Well, or if you have receipts for the guy, I painted your car, I painted your car.
Yeah, yeah, customers receipts. Any of that would be persuasive to me.
Because in reality.
That there's evidence of the use.
The contamination issue is, it's not our jurisdiction, you know.
We can't say, if we don't think, so let's say it's been abandoned.
Right.
They can't prove it, and they say, well, we want, we want relief, we want a special permit to start doing that, or to renew it and start after two-year abandonment. We don't have authority to do it.
Okay, well, I was going to say, we don't have the authority to, to say.
A separate principal use.
It's like the issuance of a building permit. It's not us, it's the building department. We just grant the permit, then you got to comply and that's, it's not our jurisdiction.
Yeah, and that, and that our, our, our building commissioner did present, you know, a very lengthy analysis of all the different things, requirements that would need to be met if this was approved, the, you know, all the updates to the code and everything like that, which I'm sure you're well aware of, and that would, that would not be our jurisdiction, that would be something we would, that would our building commissioner would enforce at that point. But, all right, did, did any of the other?
So Charlie Patsios, one thirty Atlantic Avenue, Swampscott. I'm also the chair of the Swampscott Housing Authority and the largest abut to the parcel. And you might recall sometime back, the housing authority had verbally entered into an agreement to try to acquire the parcel, to develop it into housing. And we worked with the state and the determination was that it wasn't a suitable site for us to continue pursuing it for housing. At that particular time, I had walked the property, I had gone inside the building, and in the one corner, and I hope this helps, in one corner in the back, I remember where they used to paint the cars. And the reason I remember that was because Ricky Wilson was my next door neighbor on Greenwood Avenue, and in a snowstorm, he hit the side of my car. And so he said, I'll fix it down at the garage. And so they brought it down there, they fixed the rear quarter, they popped out the dent and they, they, they painted it. It wasn't a big job, but it got done there. As far as the housing authority is concerned, when we had looked at the property and we had asked for some time to evaluate it, we had done some environmental testing on the site, record search wise, we hadn't found anything that was troubling to us. With what I just heard about the spray booth and the, where they're placing it, I don't think the housing authority has any issues with that type of filtration, especially if those extra measures of the health department and other agencies of the town which have the authority to inspect and supervise something like this, the housing authority is not opposed to it. So we're happy to send that in writing to you if that would be helpful. And going back to the, my knowledge of John Lally, I came to town in nineteen, early nineteen ninety, and I like old cars, and so Mr. Lally, John Lally, had parts for Model A's in there. And, and I had asked him one time what that stuff was that he had in the corner. He said, well, we used to use lead when we fixed the cars, the dents, so we used to heat up lead, and we'd put lead applications on it. And there was pictures, unfortunately, I'm sure they're gone now, of him working on old cars, thirties and forties and fifties and, and painting them. I don't know exactly how they did it, but I saw pictures of it and I saw evidence of where it was. And I know they fixed my car in there. It certainly wasn't a wreck, but it was, it was some body damage there. So I know it was done for us, and that was nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, when that work was done, and I knew where the car was because I saw it when it was getting fixed in the corner. I hope that helps.
It helps, I think, except for the question of abandonment in the last couple of years. There's some testimony of that.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Annie Pulaski. I live around the block on Beach Avenue. We've lived there for over twenty years. I actually used to get my car fixed at Lally's, and I was always amazed that for how many bays that building has, he only had one working, which was the one right next to the office. So those other two or three, whatever, on the side, like, weren't being used. I've never seen any body work being done, I've never seen any painting. I'm just personally, in the time that I've lived there. I've gotten my brakes done, I've gotten the oil changes, I've gotten all that kind of stuff, but I've never seen auto body repair done there.
When were you last in the building?
Oh, you went in there when it was being rented to the, to that, what's his, what was that guy's name?
I remember the man's name well, his name is Lennon.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was mostly tires and repair. And with Lally's, yeah, we used to get oil changes there done, and it was, yeah, there wasn't a lot going on there.
I, I used to also get my oil changed at Lally's for years, and I, I don't remember a lot, I mean, oftentimes I'd need a repair and he'd send me somewhere else.
Right.
Like, just for, not a body repair, but just a simple repair and rather than an oil change, he'd send me, you know, sometimes he'd fix it, but sometimes he'd send me to other places. Wasn't, he had, he was slowing down a lot on what he was doing there.
I was at Bob's a lot with friends. I was there so often over the years. He helped me with a lot of my projects, and I never saw him doing any spray painting. I don't know if that's useful to you or not, but I, I think I would have smelled it if he was doing any painting. Also, is it, is it unreasonable for me to ask for the manufacturer's name and the model number and all the specs for dealing with the particle matter and the gaseous, and the gases, the volatile again? Is that unreasonable for me to ask? And the second thing is, do you ever run into an incident when you're doing something on the zoning board, understand you're looking at it from a different perspective, but do you ever run into anything where it might cause you to refer something to the Board of Health for the environmental concerns?
I don't think it's unreasonable for you, for you to ask. I'm sure when, when they pulled the permit, if they, if they were going to do it and they had to pull a permit, they would have to, they would explain, they would be much more detailed. I don't know if you've made that decision, what brand you would go with.
We have an idea, but it's a tenant.
Okay, so they haven't made that.
It's not us, we're just a landlord, so I'm going to depend on the tenant.
So they haven't made that decision yet, as far as the brand?
Well.
But if a permit was pulled, they would, they would have, have to.
Would there be another?
Show detailed plans.
Would there be another hearing? I mean, can we know this information before you make your decision? That seems reasonable.
Well, it's not really, that's not our, so our jurisdiction is really on the use as far as the details on what that booth looks like and, and how it filters and everything like that, that our building commissioner would be in charge of making sure that was meeting all the state, state rules and, as well as town rules. But most of that's legislated by the state.
I think any permit is eventually public record, so you could look up a permit number that would have drawings and specifications attached to it.
But you would have already approved the permit, so what?
No, we wouldn't approve the building a permit. We would, we would, to be honest, in this, in this situation, normally what we would do is issue a special permit. This is an unusual situation in the sense that there is no special permit for this use. The only way this use of, as an auto body shop, the only reason it exists at all in this location is because it always has. So it's a continued use. So we wouldn't, we basically would be issuing a finding that the use is indeed continuous and they can then continue it. So that's what we would be issuing, we wouldn't really be issuing a special permit. The building permit would be what they would be pulling from the building commissioner, and that would have all the detailed plans of everything they're going to do, and it's up to the building commissioner to issue that permit. But that is public record and you would be able to.
But that, it doesn't involve another hearing?
It does not involve a hearing. It's either they can do it, the, the inspector either allows it or does not.
Allows the spray paint booth, you mean?
Yes.
So we're back to the same issue that we, you know, it seems like we're stalled here and.
Yeah, I think what would be helpful is if we had.
The petitioner can answer the question, can he provide what?
Yeah, do you, you feel you can provide information, receipts from customers that have had auto body work done?
You can provide anything you want, right? Just, you know, anything that you think helps.
But you think shows that the use has not, was never abandoned? And that's something you could come back, come back for? Did anybody else have any, any other questions? All right, so.
I, I was just looking at, on forty A six, section six, which is what protects, I'm familiar with it so much for protection of a pre-existing structure or pre-existing nonconforming lot. And I just wanted, I just went into Westlaw research just to see what it says about use. And I think it might be instructive for us, something for me to learn, too.
Yeah.
Because it does talk about, it gets into, believe it or not, the second accept clause. I remember that from some of the stuff, but so forty A six contains two accept clauses as follows. One, except as herein provided, a zoning ordinance or bylaw shall not apply to structures or uses lawfully in existence or lawfully begun. So same as it protects a structure, so if it's existing, it's grandfathered. And then there's B, but shall apply to any change or substantial extension of such use. So that's what we have here on that analysis. And then there's the second accept clause, except where, actually, the second except looks like it just refers to structure, not to use. So it looks like there's, but then there's, there's a case, actually, they talk about the second accept clause for structure as it relates to use. But I, I think it's just the, that analysis that they're protected, but any change or substantial, if it's, if it's a non-material change, I think that's another avenue the petitioner has. If we ruled it as something minor, if we had a finding that the expansion of the use was minor in relation to the protected principal use, I think we have authority to grant relief there, too. So I think there's two potential avenues of relief. One is if they can prove the continuous uninterrupted use, accessory use. And then number two, if they can prove that they don't, if they don't have that, then if the use is not a substantial change, specifically a substantial extension of such use.
But an extension is like if, if I spent my whole life painting with a brush and then someone invents a sprayer and now, you know, the evolution of it just is not.
It's subjective. I don't think it's subjective. I think it's very subjective as to whether or not it's a substantial change.
Either the painting has been ongoing and continuous, and then that's the finding, or, like you said, the finding would be that, that a body shop, it is analogous, is not a substantial difference than a repair shop, and that's, that would be the other analysis. If you feel that a body shop is, you know, if the board members feel a body shop is an extension of a, you know, general repair, and it's not substantially different, then that would be the.
And, and that's why I read your definition, because you, the chairwoman is correct. There are, there are some municipal bodies that issue separate licenses through whatever licensing entity they have, whether it's the licensing board or the city council, or they issue separate licenses for auto body, auto repair. Some municipalities, you know, even here, if you were to approve it, you have to get permits for the storage of the paint because it's a flammable. But what Attorney Kaminsky was talking about, there is a line of cases for that second accept clause, it's known as the Powers test.
Yeah.
And, and I, I didn't specifically say it, but I clearly read the three tests, that the use reflects the nature and the purpose of the nonconformity previously, took effect before zoning was in effect. There's no difference in the quality or character as well as the degree, and that's, that's the subjective part, that goes back to my Jesuit training, degree is volume, it's not essence. And so motor vehicle, what is motor vehicle repair? It's working on motor vehicles. And I purposely chose the definition, the example of a, a gas station, because that's a reported case where the modernization of a gas station from an old gas station was found not to be substantially an expansion, it was just a modernization. It was a renovation. And that's, that's why I, I use that example. And then the other part of the third prong of that, Powers was a building inspector, that's the, the case is named for, that the resulting use has no difference in effect on the neighborhood. Lally's garage has been there longer than most, and this would not make a difference in effect on the neighborhood. That, those three criteria go to that second accept clause into whether, how you make a determination of whether, so there's a series of cases that say, yeah, this is substantial, and there's a series of cases that say, that's not substantial, they're all reported, you could look at them, but in my judgment, we fall to the side of the line that says, especially since your definition says fenders, bumpers, whoever drafted the definition of auto repair or motor vehicle repair in the town of Swampscott clearly had in mind, it didn't stop with the engine, it went to the body work of the vehicle.
We're back to the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually at Balalta. Balalta actually, you know, comes up all the time.
Comes up all the time, yeah.
Not only structure, but quoting within Balalta says structure or use.
He says he can prove that it's a continuous use.
Yeah, if you can prove, I would say, yeah, I would say that's, that's.
Continue it and come back and give us the proof and we'll.
So what we'll do is we'll continue this to our next month's meeting, and we'll ask you to bring proof that it's a, that it's been a continued use. If it's a continued use, then, then it's, it's just a finding, it's not a special permit, it's just a finding that it's been a continued use, and then you have a right to continue that use. The date of that meeting is?
And before, I just want to check and make sure that whoever is attending online didn't want to also speak for the public hearing?
All right. All right.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
November 18.
I'm, I'm looking up the date also.
November 18, I have.
Yep, yep, that's what I have, too.
Can I have one more question?
Yes, sure. Just wait for the microphone, please. Thank you.
So just to make sure I understand, what you're trying, what you've been trying to tell me is that at the end of this hearing tonight, whatever decision you make, what is the status of the, of the spray paint booth?
So right, what we're deciding, what we're talking about doing right now is continuing this to the November 18th meeting and at which point the petitioner is being asked to bring some proof that this has been a continuous use of the auto body shop portion of, of the repair shop. And if that is a continued use, then, and that is in the entire, and the board votes that it, it looks like it has been a continuous use, then you would, then it would just be a finding that the use can continue. Then they would have to pull a permit with the building inspector for anything that they want to build and add to the space.
And that's not public, that's, that's not a public hearing process?
That's not a public hearing process.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all? All right, so can we get a motion to continue to the November 18th meeting?
I'll make a motion, continue to November 18.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we'll see you then. Thank you.
Cut to the chase.